Very cool.
Hi, Evelyn.
Next year I have to have a lighter suit.
This is supposed to be real fun. You're a sucker?
Yeah.
I would say so.
I have a suggestion for you, too.
Maybe if when you step away, step away to the shady part?
Yeah, or I put on my uniform.
Ooh.
That'd be nice.
But I can have whites.
Oh, okay.
The City of Riverbank's special city council meeting for Tuesday, May 31st, 2016, is now in session. It is 21st, I mean 31st at 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Leanne Jones Cruz has an excused absence. Councilmember Cal Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Janine Tucker?
Here.
Mayor Richard O'Brien?
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any councilmember and staff who have a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we move to public business from the floor. Pursuant to government code in reference to a special meeting, the public has the opportunity to address the city council only on items appearing on this special meeting notice. Individual comments are limited to a maximum of five minutes, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another. Do we have public business from the floor? Item two, business resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the replacement of the Riverbank Community Swimming Pool Heater.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you so much for making time for the special meeting this evening. The primary purpose of scheduling this meeting was to follow up on an item that was discussed during the budget workshop, and that is funding for the pool heater, which at that time we had noted had failed. And since that time, it has been determined to be unrepairable. And so, in the interest of providing the best customer service and having our programs be as high quality as possible, we are asking you to consider funding that pool heater. Patrick is going to provide a brief staff report and some of the issues that come up, and then go from there. In anticipation, we have prepared a resolution of support for the funding at the conclusion of the staff report.
Mayor, members of the council, we knew that the pool heater would fail. We saw it coming. It was in our capital improvement program and also in the budget, preliminary budget for this year. It was kind of in our replacement plan. We were hoping that we would be able to make it last one more year, but it did fail. We are aware we need to get three bids. The proposal that we have for the funding tonight that we're asking for is $32,290. That is from the company that normally works on our pool. We are in the process of talking to someone tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get two more quotes. What we want to be careful is this specific pool heater lasted 17 years, which was a, it's a good model. There's another one that is similar, that comes in three smaller units instead of one, that it's a less expensive price, but we're going to, we're going to come up with the best quality heater for the least price. So, we're going to do our due diligence in that. So, the top amount would be the $32,290, and that includes installation. So, what we're asking council is to consider approving the resolution for the appropriation of funds, and what we'll do is move as quickly as we can. We do have swim lessons starting Monday, and our full season of swimming starting Monday, but we'll just make do as we go along while we go through the process of getting the best price.
Comments or questions from the council? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration and/or recommendation.
I move that we approve the resolution.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Janine Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Passes 4-1.
Thank you, and thank you.
Sorry, 4-0.
Thank you, and thank you for having the special meeting. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Item 2.2, update on application to LAFCO for a municipal service review sphere of influence update.
Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, the LAFCO Board of Commissioners considered the city's application for an update to its municipal service review and sphere of influence update. And at that time, the mayor, John Anderson, backed up by members of the staff, including our legal team, Tom Helenan and Robin Boral, presented the city's proposal. There were some questions that came up during the course of those discussions. We wanted to bring an update to you and talk about how we move forward. At this time, the matter is scheduled to be considered again by the LAFCO Board at its July meeting. John Anderson is here this evening to provide a PowerPoint review of the proposal to LAFCO as well as a brief overview of the results of the discussion.
Thanks, Jill. Mayor, members of the council, I've prepared just kind of a brief recap as to where we are with this entire process. Obviously, this council has heard this item a number of times. We filed an application. That application was considered by the LAFCO Commission on May 25th, and we basically got a 60-day continuance. So, as a refresher, the city's existing sphere of influence is shown with this diagram. Basically, it comprises about 708 acres, of which maybe 500 acres is available for development, but some of that's constrained with, you know, access issues with hetchy overhead power line and underground water lines and other issues. So, it's, while we say it's 708 acres, it's really, really much, much less than that. But nevertheless, helped us support what we thought was an application to LAFCO for sphere expansion. So, then, what this represents is what our current sphere would allow according to our general plan. Again, you've seen this a couple different times. And then, this is an evaluation of what we were proposing as part of the overall sphere change and the increase as clearly articulated in our documents here and also in our application with LAFCO. So, we're talking about, you know, increasing our SOI from 708 acres to 2187 acres. Ken, this map represents where we're looking at. We had primary sphere of influence, sphere of influence, which is represented in the blue, and then an area of concern, which was beyond that. Area of concern is a definition that's provided for by Stanislaus LAFCO. The LAFCO Commissioners themselves crafted, working with their staff, the language that's there. And we just simply asked for implementation of that language to an area that matches what our general plan boundary is. So, that's, there's no mystery behind where the lines came from. You know, it matches up against what our, ultimately what our general plan suggested. And there's nothing more than an opportunity to receive inquiries from the county when they receive land use entitlement applications. They can, quite frankly, they can ignore our comments, but at least we have the opportunity to participate in the process. And apparently, at the LAFCO Commission, there was a lot of confusion regarding what area of concern is, the language that's, you know, contained to the LAFCO policies, et cetera. So, I think we did the best we could to try to explain that, but that still, I think, is a confusing point with the LAFCO Commission. This is the detail behind the extra sphere, the larger sphere, and what it might generate. And then, you know, in evaluating our project, I had hoped there would have been more discussion by LAFCO staff as to where City of Riverbank is in relationship to other cities in this county and their sphere of influence. And I had talked with the executive officer before the meeting and thought that was going to be a bigger point in her presentation to the commission, but it really wasn't, and it kind of got lost. But what you see, and this is a report of, this is one of two reports, actually, that the LAFCO executive officer has presented to her commission to kind of give a status update of where all the cities are with their growth patterns, where they are with their adopted sphere, where are they with, you know, with future annexations, et cetera. But what you see is that, you know, Riverbank as it stands, at least, you know, as of this report, you know, December of 2015, you know, where our sphere of influence is the least of any of the cities in the county. And I, you know, so by us asking, you know, to increase our sphere to a little over, you know, 2,000 acres, I don't think is inconsistent with what sphere of influence the other cities have, especially in light of, you know, what Modesto has, is almost 12,000 acres within their sphere of influence. So, I, I mean, I think in retrospect, there could have been a little more discussion about this, you know, as part of that presentation, but, you know, maybe it's something that we bring up or discuss at the LAFCO meeting coming up in July. And then, again, from the LAFCO report, you know, they kind of talked about, you know, the history of annexation in Riverbank. This exhibit clearly illustrates, you know, where we've been. Last annexation was back in 1991. You know, Crossroads being annexed in 1989, and really not much since then. You know, as compared, and this is kind of the detail on that, but as compared to, you know, what the city of Modesto has, you know, which is, you know, a rather large geographic area, you know, 70% of which is, you know, in prime ag areas, you know, and, you know, kind of a description of what they've done with, you know, adding to their SOI and then ultimately annexation, which, quite frankly, a lot of the, a lot of the sphere of influence and annexation, you know, process that Modesto has, hasn't moved forward to physical development because of the economy and because of infrastructure limitations and costs. So, you know, they've got their struggles. I got that. But somehow, we get swept into, I think, much, much bigger issue with the LAFCO Commission. So, what did LAFCO do? They, on a 5-0, motioned in second to delay our application to a time certain 60 days, which is July 27th, 2016. What they asked us to do is to meet and confer with City of Modesto, you know, based on their latest letter to the LAFCO Commission, which was dated May 24th, which basically said that they have concerns with what we're proposing and want to meet and confer. That's pretty much the essence of the letter that they presented. The second is to meet and confer with Stanislaus Consolidated Fire District. I mean, they presented a letter, which we were unaware of, to the LAFCO Commission that specifically stated, and it seemed as if they were confused between annexation and sphere expansion, which was kind of a topic the entire night. But Consolidated Fire made it clear that they're working with the city. They have, the city has general plan policies that promote public fire safety, but that they lack mechanisms to pay for the fire station and to pay for the mechanical equipment, the engines and apparatus and whatnot within those stations, which, you know, I've had discussions with the fire department a number of different times. They clearly understand it's their obligation to put together a needs justification document and ultimately to adopt a fee, a regional fee, that we then in turn can apply to any development project. We're perfectly willing to do that, but that's a motion that they have to take. So, there's, I think there's some discussion, clarification with the fire district. And I don't know if, Jill, you've had a chance to talk to the fire district, and you can update that.
Yes, actually, thank you, John. I did actually have an opportunity to discuss, to finally connect with the interim fire chief, Chief Wafnowski, who we spoke on the phone for probably a good half an hour. And he did clarify that his intention was to not hold up the project in any way. And upon careful reading of the letter, you could tell that it was just kind of stating some concerns, not opposition at all to the project. And he apologized that it caused delay and that it created some additional uncertainty at, you know, at the very last minute. So, I do believe that he'd be willing to write a letter clarifying what their position is and moving forward. And it did provide us a good opportunity to touch base and clarify where we each stand with this. So, that was a positive conversation. It just was unfortunate that we were not able to talk to him. We made numerous attempts to connect with the fire chief Wednesday prior to the meeting, as well as later in the week, and we were ultimately able to connect late Friday afternoon.
Did he go through the board?
I did not ask that question specifically. I, it didn't sound like it. It just sounded like it was...
I asked our board representative to give me a call. I have yet to receive a call.
So, specifically, the LAFCO Commissioners felt it was appropriate for us to meet and confer and to present, re-present new documentation back to the LAFCO Commission based on these two letters and these two different agencies. So, it's clear to us that we've got to initiate that process. And I know the mayor has initiated that process with City of Modesto. So, it's going to be kind of an ongoing discussion over the next week or so to try to understand exactly what their concerns and position is relative to what's being presented as a sphere expansion. One of the other points was to clarify and support the SEQA findings, which we're using for our sphere expansion, which is nothing more than using the programmatic EIR that was done for our general plan. I mean, it's current. You know, it certainly reflects the effort that has been done by the City of Riverbank starting back in 2003, 2004, and ultimately adopted in 2009. And at least for a sphere expansion, there's no additional environmental review necessary. Annexation, yes. Annexation, we'll have to go through a specific EIR for the project, which analyzes all of the impacts associated with that proposal. But sphere expansion, no. So, we're going to have to provide a little more language in that regard.
Reason why the sphere, I mean, the EIR came into question was there was supposed to have been an additional fire station, which never was constructed. And that should shift the EIR. That would negate the EIR, and an updated EIR is required. That was rejected by Consolidated because in the needs assessment, we did not yet qualify for an additional fire station. That will be reviewed again as our expansion happens, or if it does not happen, Consolidated won't get an additional fire station.
Well, and then let me give you a little update on that. You know, in the discussions with the developer on Crossroads West, I mean, we've included the fire department, fire district, from day one. And they have done a considerable amount of mapping, mapping of their service areas to determine that the best location for a new fire station, quite frankly, would be along Crawford Road Extension at or around Coffee Road. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, as that project moves forward, that'll be part of the analysis. And that'll be confirmed in that specific plan and in that environmental document. And then, then we've done our homework. And it's basically up to the district board of directors to move forward with, you know, site acquisition and physical development.
But then, if, let's say, play the devil's advocate, since you have the sphere of influence and secondary sphere of influence. If we develop the sphere of influence and not the secondary, the Consolidated could acquire the property, and the improvements would have to be done at the cost of the county, because that would not be allowed, since this would not be in our sphere.
Well, okay, I may disagree there. We have, you have an independent district. The independent district has the ability to impose fees countywide or within their district, not just, not just impact fees within the city of Riverbank. The map that I've shown up here, you know, the mayor is talking about primary versus secondary. Our sphere proposal goes all the way out to Coffee Road. It's likely, you know, with Crawford Road Extension, you know, in this, kind of in this alignment, that there'd be some kind of a fire station, you know, located here. If the sphere line is reduced, you know, to this halfway mark, then we'll show the circulation, you know, to the site. It'll still be identified, but ultimately, it's up to the district board of directors to acquire and ultimately, you know, work towards, you know, the funding of the station. And the funding, quite frankly, comes through the mitigation agreements, you know, impact fees that they assess, which is no different than the City of Riverbank, you know, updating our fees justification document and imposing those fees that are justified and reasonable against the capital facilities that we know are necessary to support growth. It's no different. It's no different. There's a process, you know, public hearings and whatnot that have to take place. So, the last, last point that was made clear by at least a couple of the commissioners was that if you look at the important farmland mapping, you know, this area, the area on the west side of Riverbank, has got, you know, more significant, you know, value ag ground than on the east side. So, I didn't hear much objection to expanding to the sphere on the east side. What I heard was objections to expansion of sphere on the west side. And that was, and that was clearly articulated by at least, you know, two of the commissioners in light of what has been presented here and the number, the total acreage sphere of influence as compared to what we currently have. But that comparison was not made against what sphere of influence other cities have. And I think there should have been some more discussion in that regard. So, that's pretty much...
I think the biggest thing they were afraid of was the area of concern. They don't understand it. They never heard of it until we brought it up, but it's in their policies.
Yep. And there are other cities. City of Waterford, for example, when they adopted their general plan, it's a rather large general geographic area. You know, they adopted, you know, primary and secondary spheres, new spheres to match against the general plan, and then an area of concern that matched their general plan boundary, which is not uncommon. So, it's come to them before, maybe not in the same commission. But anyway, so that's where we are. So, back to the commission in July after we have some more discussion and then internal strategy and deliberation.
John, can you clarify for me what Modesto's concerns are again?
You know, early on in the process in developing the application, we notified all agencies, all individuals, all interested parties that may have some investment in what Riverbank's doing. City of Modesto was one of those. City of Modesto's comment at that time was a reflection of their concerns with Crossroads Commercial and the access points that were granted on Clarabelle. So, we knew that then, and we, and then, when the official application was presented to LAFCO and then notices went back out to those agencies, Modesto's comment was almost identical to the first comments. And we responded to that, let them know, you know, what our general plan talked about, what the future traffic conditions would allow, et cetera, and gave them a very thoughtful response. So, actually, at that time, I think we pretty much, I thought we had resolved, or at least, you know, moved in a positive direction with Modesto. The letter that we got, you know, at the last minute was a bit confusing, quite frankly, and wasn't really specific as to what their real concerns were. They raised issues relative to SEQA, but it didn't appear that those concerns were really genuine and that there were some underlying issues that they wanted to discuss with City of Riverbank, which is, which quite frankly, we're trying to get to the bottom of right now.
If I'm understanding you correctly, traffic flow is a big thing in the traffic.
Traffic flow is a big thing. You know, the chairman of the LAFCO Commission is Brad Hahn. Brad Hahn is ex-city council member. Apparently, he was on the council at the time the Crossroads project was being developed. And there was a lot of concern by the City of Modesto about, you know, curb cuts, so to speak, on Clarabelle and its impacts to Clarabelle as a Class 2 expressway.
I'm going to make a comment. Correct me if I'm wrong. Didn't they approve the City of Modesto shopping center to be built on the corner of Sylvan and Old Oakdale? So, I have a hard time. I have a hard time if...
Sylvan and Oakdale, they have, Save Mart wants to relocate to that corner. And I think the city did approve it, but I think it's in litigation right now.
My point is, I have a hard time with them saying, "We're creating a traffic problem by building crossroads." And then, just a mile or so down the road, they're going to build another complex that's going to increase the traffic even more.
Right, well, and again, I mean, you know, we made it clear to them that they'd get, you know, another bite at the apple, so to speak, because with Crossroads West, specific plan and EIR, they'll be noticed. They'll get an opportunity to look at all the traffic analysis, look at what's being presented, but it doesn't sound like that was really enough for them. And Brad Hahn, you know, expressed his concern, again, you know, at the commission level, at the LAFCO commission level, about, you know, this access point. But, you know, it's kind of interesting. Supervisor, you know, Bill O'Brien raised the fact that, you know, even on, even on Clarantina, you know, they allow access. So, it's not as if you can have an expressway with no access at all. So, there is that opportunity. And each one has to be analyzed and evaluated independently, right? So...
Another thing that I'm wondering about, and I'm learning at this point, but you look at the City of Oakdale, and you look at City of Riverbank. Our populations are approximately the same size. But Oakdale's got a lot more acreage right now in their sphere of influence than even within their city limits than we do. And I'm just curious of why the LAFCO Board isn't looking at that a little bit harder.
Oh, I'm, you know, I, yeah, that's...
That's a very valid point.
It's a, no, it's a valid point. I mean, and I think in retrospect, I think we should have, we should have talked more about that. But, you know, it's a very unique condition that we're not having to try to validate these numbers, because these numbers were presented and validated by their own staff. By the way, it was their own staff that recommended approval of what we had presented to them as a reasonable, logical expansion of our existing sphere. And by the way, we got a resolution from Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors on a 5-0 vote to that very, very, very point, logical and reasonable expansion of our sphere that ultimately supported our application.
Thank you.
So, it's a little bit confusing.
When we go the next time, we need to address the City of Riverbank's and the City of Modesto's conflicts, if there are any identified. Hoping that meeting with the mayor of Modesto to alleviate any of our issues in a sphere of influence increase. At the project level, there may be concerns. If you take a look at what Jill put out to all of you that I had asked for, take a look at the sales tax, total sales tax. They outgain us by $51 per person per year. If you take a look at retail, we have $42 per person per year, and Modesto has $54 per person per year. If you take a look at the total tax, it does not include the counties and the City of Modesto's sales tax sharing agreement. Now, I just bought a car at Modesto Toyota. We get none of that. But the City of Modesto does. They get 56% of the sales tax. And, but that's, they won't tell you how much that is. So, their sales tax could be more than double ours. Their impacts that they say we have created with the crossroads. I beg to differ. We have more people going to Modesto every day for employment than we have pedestrians coming to shop. We have more residents spending money at Costco's and their other ones than they are spending in the City of Riverbank, just by the comparison of 42 versus 54. So, impacts, which is one of the areas that Patrick Kelly is concerned about, So impacts, which is one of the areas that Patrick Kelly is concerned about, and he will have the ear of the mayor. So we have to address any concerns that the City of Riverbank has, in addition to providing the brief. We have to get consolidated board of directors to provide some type of letter of neutrality or of support. I believe in your presentation, you have to address the North County quarters in a five-minute history and in a, how it affects, sorry, how it affects our, our sphere of influence change. Clearly, it was not known, the North County quarter history versus the crossroads. I believe we need to also capitalize on the staff reports stating that this was a project that was started and presented before the LAFCO board in 1988 and was reduced to the sphere of influence change in 1989, that this is logical and orderly. To alleviate Gammens' problem, I believe that we legalize or lawyerize the EIR. Why it, why it was, why it is the acceptable document, not a, it could be acceptable, no, it is the acceptable document.
I think you made that point very well at the hearing, Mayor, and we will do that. And that, if I could, kind of follows up on a point Councilmember Campbell had regarding the City of Modesto's concerns. We're ready and able to meet with them in good faith to talk about their concerns. But as like I said at the meeting, if their only acceptable response from us is to go out and do major environmental work at this stage, that's unacceptable and just not fair.
Okay, here's the conversation from the mayor of Modesto. Well, I'm going to meet with my staff around the middle of June, and then we can get together and talk about it. We'll, we'll talk a little bit, and then I'll get together with my staff, and then we can talk about it. Figuring it's going to be at the end of June, early July. I told them I'm on a time crunch. If I'm going to meet on the 27th, by the 17th, I have to have my staff report submitted to LAFCO. I have to have that staff report finalized for review by the first or second week in July. If I have to have major changes because you're going to hold me up for ransom, I better know it today so I can have my staff of three do the work that your staff of 100 cannot do. Back off, Richard.
Well taken, Mayor.
I need to, as we're developing our plan, address the area of concern and offer that up as an option to reduce or eliminate. We need to do a comparison study, which is provided by the LAFCO staff, of the other cities' spheres of influence, undeveloped property. I don't know, I don't think I want you to do a, a what is usable, what is not usable, but we know that we have about 280 acres of usable land that we can develop within our current sphere of influence and that we're currently developing or applications to develop. One of the things that they don't understand is that on the east side is full of ranchettes and have no intention on selling and developing, and I, I clearly understand that, nor would we make them develop. Just like they know at the, on Crawford Row, all those ranchettes down there, those aren't considered prime land anymore because they're now considered residential units if they're under 40 acres. So I'm going to address those areas with the board of supervisor, I mean, the two supervisors tomorrow, and I'll get back to you immediately after the meeting. I told you about to compare it to the other cities. And then I think we do need to emphasize the, the board of supervisors' resolution in addition to your staff report. So it's going to be a little bit, your original staff report, so it's going to be a little bit lengthy. I will report back to the city manager what my conversations are with the two supervisors. I asked the mayor of Modesto if he could move up the meeting. He says the earliest he could get to his staff is probably late next week or the week following, and then we'll meet. I could not get a commitment that in a sphere of influence change, that is, is it necessary to do the details that he, he requested in his letter, and it was his letter he stated. This isn't a failure on the part of the City of Riverbank. I believe it's a failure, and I'm saying it publicly, on the LAFCO commission of their lack of understanding of their own policies, their own procedures, in granting a sphere of influence. And that they let 11th-hour letter control their final actions. And they're letting one policy, uh, policy number 22 dictate the 21 other policies they have, plus, plus law. So I look forward to the next 57 days and see what happens. Does anyone else have comments?
Uh, questions. So what happens with the LAFCO staff approval letter? Does it go away? Is it still valid?
This is a continuance. So everything that we've done up to this point is germane, okay? My concern is, we haven't gotten clarification yet, but if we shrink our sphere of influence, are we destroying the MSR? If we keep the sphere of influence and the board shrinks the sphere, the sphere of influence, our MSR is germane. But if we do it, I'm afraid we may have to redo the MSR. With no guarantee that the Crawford Road residents near Coffee could be protected. So, John, I want to, first off, I do want to thank you. I thought that was great. And, and even though I knew at halfway point that we were losing, it was fun to fight.
I'm going to fight another day.
All right. Thank you for the update. Any closing comments?
I just have Sue make one, one brief comment to bring something to your attention very briefly that's come to our attention in the last, since meeting.
Evelyn, did you want to say something?
I have questions. Would you already have?
No, you can ask it, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not here to neglect you, honestly. What's your question?
My question is not to have a consolidated-
Please come up, we need it for record. I think we should have a portable mic.
That's okay. Mr. Anderson said something about paying the, the mitigation and impact fees. That's something that the city collects or the Stanislaus Consolidated collects?
The city collects it from the impact fees and will pay it to the appropriate funds. So, and that's on future development. That is not on anything else.
Are we paying for a fire station? We know Stanislaus Consolidated cannot use our assessments.
It's not, it's not those assessment. These are impact fees.
I know that, but since Stanislaus Consolidated cannot use our assessments for buying land or building the fire station, and the city is going to collect these, where's the money going to come from?
From the developers on the west side.
They will pay enough to build it?
Yes, they will. But consolidate-
My concern is you're going to end up impacting the existing residents-
No, no.
On this, one way or the other, we're going to, or they're going to raise our-
And unless, unless you decide to develop a large piece of property, it's not going to affect you. It's only going to affect those who are developing, wherever they develop, and Consolidated in their needs assessment says, "I believe I need a fire station of X square feet, X height, with this type of equipment in it, it's going to cost this amount." And we, you know, they come up with a funding scheme of, let's say, $10 a unit or $15 a unit that's being built. So whenever a unit is built, $15 is collected as impact fees for Consolidated. Now, they have some money already that they collected from the crossroads for, to build a fire station that they did not build. But it wasn't, they stopped collecting because, or they stopped the impacts because they realized through a needs assessment, the fire station wasn't warranted at this time.
Either this structure is going to have to be compliant with what Stanislaus Consolidated can afford to pay for staffing and equipment because they can't raise our assessments to pay for that. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay.
See, additional residents will be paying in, and so that should pay for additional staffing.
Okay.
Okay? I don't want to increase my assessment either.
I, I'm curious, I want to make sure.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip over you.
Mayor, members of the council, quickly, just something that is kind of in the works that we wanted to just kind of put out there and get, get your opinion on is, at Riverfest, we had a couple bands out there playing at Jacob Myers Park, and Guy Berkey, who is a member of the community and now a Riverbank resident, was there, and he emceed it for the event for us and also had gotten the bands to play. So just talking from then until now, we were thinking about maybe the idea of having a concert in the park at Jacob Myers Park, just because the setting was so nice. And he wanted to try that on June 24th, so went to the Friends meeting, and we knew that he was going to do this, and asked for them to sponsor a band. And just put it out there, see how it goes, and if it went well, maybe think about concerts in the park on a more of a ongoing basis in the summer. If it didn't go well, then we would just know that it didn't go well and not do it again. So we're wondering, is there any concerns with that, or does council have any comments on that? Is that something that we should go ahead and do, or?
Um.
So there's, there's no staff costs associated with this because there's already staff out there at the event. Thought it might be just something we could throw out there, but wanted the council to be aware of it before we made any final commitments. The Friends is going to, is willing to offset the cost of the band, but did indicate they wanted to make sure, of course, that, that all of you were aware of it too. This is one of those things where it would be a one-time thing, and I think that Councilmember Campbell was at the meeting where this first came up.
Yeah, and I just have a couple, a few concerns. One of them is, that particular week on, they're going to do it on the 24th, right?
That was the idea.
Yeah, and two days before that, you're going to have the, the farmer's market, and they'll be showing the movie there. And then that Friday, they're going to be doing a concert. And Saturday night, the 25th, if I'm not mistaken, Jacob Myers Park is going to do their, a movie night, I believe. I just have a little bit of concern about two things. One, the three events being so close together, because we know that a lot of events aren't well-attended here. And two, the length of time to put this together, to advertise it, you know, that it, that it was brought to us. Other than that, I think it's, could be a great thing.
Councilmember Campbell had popped into my office this, this morning and mentioned a couple of those things. So Sue and I revisited that as a result, and Sue, why don't you give your, your take on it as?
Yeah, we're wondering, we don't know for sure, but we're wondering if it might be a different crowd, you know, maybe the different crowd that Jacob Myers might be not the same that would be attending the other two events. So we're not sure. I guess that we would know by the turnout of the three.
Clarify for me also, how is Mr. Berkey going to advertise it?
He has his advertising business, I guess, that he does, and he-
Buyers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, of course, we would go ahead and do our standard things, which is, you know, would be Facebook, which, you know, we don't know what the audience is. We, we try and hit a variety of different venues, so.
And what, what we do is, we also have our park hosts and people that work during the weekend when it's busy, they'll promote the movies in the park, and we have banners that we put out there. So a lot of it is promoting to park visitors at that specific location, so.
There'll be a lot of fun things going on between the farmer's market, potentially at least one, maybe one concert, and then the movies in the park. And my understanding is that the, the City of Riverbank has coordinated with the Chamber to kind of continue the, the Transformers collection of movies. So they'll do, you know, the farmer's market might have the first one, and then we'll do the second one, and, so it was really good coordination there, and hopefully there'll be a big turnout. And for anybody who might be listening tonight, who hasn't been to the movies in the park, I got a chance to sit in at the beginning of one last year, and, oh my gosh, it is really fun to be, to be out there, and, and I think the community park is the same thing, just being outside and enjoying a nice, cool evening air and the good stuff. Anyway, lot, lot of fun.
That's great. And we don't have any concerns about security or, you know, how late would, in the evening would this go?
Yeah, it would be done at eight, so the park would close at the normal time.
Oh, okay.
What my fear is, we're so used to things not really going, 100 people for movie night, that's comfortable, that's easy. What would we do if all of a sudden there was 1,000 at a concert in the park? I mean, I would be really surprised, but I'd be getting a lot of phone calls and we'd be getting people out there very quickly, is what would happen. But, yeah, that is kind of, you know, it's hard to know if, if a lot of people are going to turn out or not.
She's thinking Woodstock. We, we should not have any, you know, concerns or say in what's going on unless it is a policy decision. This isn't a policy decision. But the policies could come around, because of this, whether we need to increase staff or we need to charge a fee, or do we have to have certain type of security issues? Or it is a 24-hour event that's going to cause the neighbors to be upset, I, you know, like they do at Woodward. So, or Woodstock. Right now, it's, it's an event that's being held in the, in the park. We thank you for the information. But even if I objected, it doesn't mean anything because it's not a policy decision. It would be Richard O'Brien's reaction to.
Good luck, Sue. I think it's a good idea.
I think, I do too.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
My only concern would be that we'd be competing against a concert each Friday at Oakdale.
And I wasn't aware of that, so I'll research that a little bit as well.
This is an, it's an activity update, and I, I really just commend the staff, even as busy as they are, and Sue got a lot of phone calls over the weekend because everybody, everybody joined the parks, is just still being open to new things and creating some new opportunities. So my hat goes off to them and also thanking them for the help that they gave in, in executing the, the vision that the mayor had for the Memorial Day event, and, you know, all of you were there, and, and this was a vision that he had and he shared and the council supported, and so really appreciate that, Mayor, and I think it was, it was very well-received by the community, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any council staff, any other council remarks? I just have one that we have to put out. Norma, I believe you're going to be the one involved. There's going to be a heat wave, a tropical heat wave, we could sing and dance, but we need to get out the cooling stations. We need to have those known throughout the city. I believe the cooling stations are at the community center?
Cooling zone.
Cooling zone, yeah, I'm sorry. City council chambers and Jill's office.
That's, that's the freezing zone.
But no, let's, all seriousness, seriousness, let's get that out there, and then you're involved with the seniors. Talk to them about checking on each other, making sure that they call each other. Water, make sure that we have the water available. No water shut-offs during this time, please. Let's, let's be, let's keep the residents safe. And I was going to ask Chief Kylie, but if some of our first responders visit, not do anything, but visit those who have made semi-permanent encampments on the river. Last week, they didn't predict it would be this high. Okay, close of comments. Okay, item four, closed session. Item 4.1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property 23701 South Santa Fe Road Escalon, APN 24906012. Agency negotiator Jill Anderson. Negotiating parties Zarifa Norrie. Under negotiations, instructions to negotiate, to negotiate will include price and payment terms. The public has the option to make comments on this for a limit up to five minutes prior to us going to- to us going to closed session. Does anyone wish to make a public comment? Say none? We adjourn to closed session. Item 5.1, Report on Closed Session, Item 4.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, we conclude the meeting for tonight.